Merry Christmas, Canyon City. This is the last city council meeting for December 2022, or for the whole year of 2022, and Christmas is coming in less than a week. So we want to wish everybody a happy and a blessed and very safe Christmas season. With that, we better do a roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any citizens' requests to speak to council? Seeing that, I would like to invite Chief and Commander Van Dyke, if you want to join us, to give a report on shop with a cop that we just had on Saturday. It was an amazing event.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. Yes, it was a very big day for CCPD and Canyon City. We had roughly 130 children that we were able to take shopping and organize chaos at best. I think several councilmembers were there and probably can attest to that, but it was a wonderful time. We certainly bridged a lot of gaps with our peer agencies and just community folks within Canyon City. Had a lot of community leaders out there and business owners and teachers and our DOC and Bureau of Prison folks that came out to participate and CBI. So it was wonderful. I'm very proud of the city and the agency for what we were able to accomplish Saturday. And I'm very thankful to Walmart, Lynn Ross and her team, you know, just top shelf, helped us be successful right across the board.
Well, I can tell by the state of your voice what a weekend it was for you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So between you and Van Dyke, do you have any takeaways that you'd like to share with us about the kiddos and experiences?
Well, we had, you know, it never ceases to amaze me. I was telling Mr. Stevens today just how charitable even young people can be when you give them a couple hundred dollars to spend on themselves. They never seem to forget their parents or their siblings. And I had one young lady, she was probably 11 or 12, that spent all but $10 of her money on her siblings and her mother. Bought her mother an air fryer type oven that was on sale. She pre-shopped, she came in, found it was on sale, was the last one. She said, "I hid it in the store." She came back and got it. And so we gave her a little extra funds to go out and shop for herself, just to make up the difference.
Oh, good.
But that, it just never ceases to amaze me. Those kids are amazing. They don't forget, you know, they're not the only one in the world. So that's touching and refreshing at the same time.
Well, I'm sure on behalf of all city councils, especially us who had the opportunity to shop with a kiddo, that it was a wonderful experience for entire community. And I know it took quite a bit of execution and planning to pull it all together.
Yes, ma'am.
You did a great job. And please pass along that thanks from all of us.
I will pass that along. Thank you for recognizing us and supporting us. Well, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Are there any other announcements from city council? Councilmember Tracy?
I guess mine is more of a question for staff, and I didn't raise it earlier. So if there's no answers tonight, that's fine. But with wildfire today in Boulder County, I guess northwest of Boulder roughly, it reminded me about the fire we had several weeks ago here in town. And last I had heard, the thought was that the cause might have been branch wearing on a wire. And I hadn't heard anything more, whether it was a service drop line between the utility pole and a house or a building, or whether it was part of the main distribution. And I guess I'm reminded too that we have, we have wind quite a bit here, and we have a high wind warning coming up starting Wednesday night. So it just kind of brings it all back to mind and wondered if we have any more information about that fire that we had.
Yeah, I can update you on that. I heard from the fire district and initial reports are that it was a service line. It was not one of the main distribution lines. So that's, I think that's a good reminder for residents that, you know, if you do have service lines coming in from a pole to your property, to, you know, take a look and make sure that, you know, it's all clear of any obstructions.
So I wonder, and this maybe just for future discussion, if there's more we should do either as a city or a community. The first thought I had, I think I said to city administrator Stevens back when it happened several weeks ago, that I thought, you know, there are branches all over our community touching lines, whether it's service drops or whether it's lines on utility poles going from pole to pole, or wherever it is, in easements or not. And I just wonder if there's something more that we should do to protect our community from this happening again.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, one of the things that I, you know, after that event, I was in touch with Black Hills, asking for, you know, some public service announcements and more education around that. I'd like to see that come from Black Hills with the city supporting it and sharing that message.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just following up on that, I actually have Black Hills tree trimmers coming tomorrow to cut down some trees that I have that are in danger of being close to a service line. So definitely recommend reaching out if that's a, you know, take a look and definitely recommend reaching out because that is something that they will pay for and something that can potentially save you down the line. Thanks.
Thank you all. Let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Ryan Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 5th, the general government meeting on December 7th, and the special meeting, which was an executive session, on December 5th. 7B is to authorize the mayor to reappoint Randy Smith to the Board of Adjustments for a three-year term. 7C is to receive and file the 2022 election results. 7D, staff is asking to remove this from the consent agenda. 7E is to authorize the mayor to sign a water service contract for 1335 Cedar Avenue. 7F authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for 1402 South Street. 7G authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement with the Humane Society of Fremont County. 7H authorizes the mayor to sign a mental health co-responder program contract with Soul Vista. 7I is to receive and file the monthly budget summary, and 7J is to receive and file list of bills and P-card disbursements.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions or clarifications that are needed? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just hoping to, I see that we have some very informative numbers from the Humane Society, and I was just hoping to hear a little bit more.
Come on up, Doug, please. This is Doug from the Humane Society, the director. And please, we would love to hear from you.
I just put a ginger chew in my mouth. I didn't think I was going to be up this quick, so I apologize.
Stall, stall.
There's a lot in front of you, but I'll make this very quick. I don't want to keep going on tonight. I know when I was, when I was standing here, actually when I was sitting here in January of this year, I told you all that I thought that this year was going to be a rough year for the shelter. And as, I was hoping I was wrong, I really wasn't. The shelter is down $10,400 through November, and in the nine years I've been a director, the shelter hasn't lost a penny. This is the first year we've ever been down one in December ever. And the two areas that I believe contribute to the loss are, number, the first is an increase in stray emergency medical animals, and two, the construction on Rhodes Avenue. And I like to just briefly talk about both of them. So really, what is an emergency medical animal? That is a stray animal that comes into the animal shelter that needs immediate medical care, that we have to get to the vet immediately. It's not if somebody owns, let's say somebody drops off, and this just happens, a 13-year-old lab that has cancer, that needs testing, that needs this, that needs that. It's only for stray animals that come in that need emergency care. Now, one thing we do over at the shelter is legally, the animal is, it's not, it's not to shelters until the sixth business day. But if somebody comes in on day one, we will treat that animal. We will send it over to the vet, we'll treat it because I think it's the right thing to do. You know, like Brandon, if you had a dog that came in a shelter and was hit by a car and you were in Denver, by the time you got back from Denver, I'm sure he'd appreciate the fact that we treated the dog versus we put it in the kennel and let it suffer. So we treat every sick and injured animal that comes into the shelter. Now, year-to-date, Canyon City has accounted for $25,045 in emergency medical for stray animals. That's 37% of what the city's contract is to the animal shelter. Compared to last year, Canyon City accounted for $17,511 in emergency medical, again, just for strays. That was 27% of your contracts. So this year, we've seen a $7,534 increase just in Canyon City alone. Okay, emergency medical strays. Now, how does Canyon compare to everyone else out there? Well, firstly, for people that don't know, our shelter provides animal services to nine different municipalities. We do Canyon City, Florence, Rockville, Coal Creek, Williamsburg, West Cliff, Silvercliff, Custer County, and Fremont County. And while I'm thinking of it, I just received a call this morning from an official in another animal shelter in Southern Colorado. I just received it this morning, they're asking us to take over their city and their county animal services. I'm meeting with my board president tomorrow, so we may, depending on what happens with that meeting, we may be, we may be serving as many as 11 different municipalities in a couple months. So let's get back to how Canyon City compares to other areas. So through November of this year, we have seen total of $45,074 in emergency medical in nine. That's, again, that's emergency animals coming in the front door that need treatment right away. $45,000 just to treat stray animals that come in that need help. Now Canyon is at $25,045 year-to-date. That means Canyon's accounted for 56% of all the emergency medical throughout Custer and Fremont County. Compared to 2021, combined emergency medical for all of the nine areas we serve was $32,861. So that's an increase of around $12,213 in 2022. And that doesn't even include December, which has been a very high month. We've already received 56 animals this month, which is very high for December. Now, if we take in the average emergency medical in December, which is roughly around $3,500 a month, we'll end the year with an increase of $15,713 just in emergency medical alone. In 2022, Canyon had 82 emergency animals versus 134 from all the other areas. So that means Canyon accounted for 61% of all the medical, emergency medical coming in. In 20, that was 2022. In 2021, Canyon had 61 emergency animals versus 125 from all the other areas. So that's the first reason why I think the shelter is doing as bad, is it's because we're seeing more emergency cases this year, and we just can't turn our back on them, we have to treat them. Second thing is Rhodes Avenue construction. I mean, the shelter is still very much open, but it's really been handicapped by the construction. I mean, there are times when myself, my employees, our customers, we can't even turn into Rhodes Avenue anymore, and you can't get it from the other end. It's just, it's just closed off. So I think by restricting the access to shelter, the construction's really hurt the shelter financially. I say this because in November, counter donations, what that is, is if somebody walks a donation into the animal shelter, just walks a donation in for no reason at all, they're down 57% just in November. So that's a decrease right there of $2,793 in just one month. We average around $5,000 a month in walking donations. Now, how much of that loss is attributed to the Rhodes Avenue construction? Who knows? Nobody, nobody knows. I mean, this could just be a bad year, I just, but then I went one step further, and then I saw that retail was down 29%. And retail, we, we try to sell what we can to people when they adopt the animals, you know, food, leash, harnesses, things that they might go to Walmart buy. We try to sell them at the animal shelter, we hardly make any money on it, but we try to. We also have specials that we get on the radio all the time, that we're, that we're doing this, you know, 10% off retail items, 10% here. Where retail is down 29% last November compared to this November, that's a decrease of $1,874. So just between the walk-ins and retail sales, we're seeing a loss of $4,667. So those are my two reasons why I think the shelter is doing bad. Last year, or actually this year in January, when I, when I stood in front of y'all, I said that we saw so many medical cases last year, I really thought that if that kept up, we'd have a bad year this year, and sure enough, it's kept up big time. Now, I also gave you this, I won't go over all of this, but these are just all the numbers just for Canyon City. Everything in 2022, which is January through November, compared to 2021, which is the entire year. You can go over line by line either, but just briefly, dog intakes year-to-date, owner surrenders are down 42%, strays are up 37%, animal control officers and police are up 14%, this is all over last year, and DOAs are down 48%. Cat intakes, owner surrenders are down 32%, strays are up 11%, ACO police are up 100%, DOAs are down 52%. So total dog and cat, which you can see all the way to the right there, are only up 3%, that's 579 to 562. But like I said before, we have already seen 56 animals this month. So we're at 635. We've seen 73 more animals this year than last year. And in animal shelters, the numbers go down every year. Like when I started here, I want to say it was 1,800, and it just, it just ticks down year after year after year. The more spay neutered you do, the less animals that come in, the better job you're doing here. Animals shouldn't be going up. So here we are, seeing a loss with our finances, and the animals are going up. Now, all that said, our save rate, and for the new people up there, I know I've said this before, save rate calculation is very simple. It's 100% of the animals in divided by 100% of the animals out. There's nothing, it's every animal that comes in the front door and every animal that goes out. So 2022 through November, we have a 98.34% save rate. 2021 through November, we had a 98.88% save rate. In 2021, the full year, we ended with 98.78% save rate. So even though we're kind of strapped for cash, if you will, this year, we're still saving a hell lot of animals over there. So we're really doing, my team is doing, doing just a crack-up job over there, so I'm pretty proud of the job they're doing. So that's my, I went a little longer than I wanted to, but that's, that's a little update on a shelter.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick, I'd like to address you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Doug, thank you for coming in, and thank you for providing the animals, the numbers on the animals, and thank you for serving the community and the animals by doing what you do down at the Humane Society. As if the Humane Society has falling numbers of intakes, a contract like we have before us works okay. If the, if the numbers of animals are increasing, a set fee contract can really hurt the shelter because you're not charging on either your actual costs, for instance, the Canyon City dogs and cats that need medical attention, or the numbers that you're seeing from Canyon City. If you don't have a way to recover some of those number-based costs, you can, you're seeing the crunch that you're experiencing right now, where you've got, where you've got expenses that are not perhaps being covered. I would just suggest that, you know, there's, the, you've been in front of council many times over the years, and you and Jim Meisner used to have lengthy discussions about, about costs and cost per animal.
Yes, we did.
And all of those types of issues. But I would, I would just ask you to consider maybe looking at a different format of contract so that, so that you can recover the monies that are spent on the behalf of Canyon City rather than just having a set contract fee that has to cover everything. So that, that, we're not, probably not going to be able to do much here in 2023, but, but I really recommend you look at that real hard in 2024 because, because I don't want, my, for one, as just a personal opinion, I don't want to see the shelter hurt. I don't want to see the shelter have to cut back on what they're doing. I think it is an important service, and in that light, it needs to be, it needs to be appropriately funded. And I realize that you're dealing with a lot of different municipalities or other governmental entities for your funding. But, but I would recommend you look at that and, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure, but if there's, maybe there's something that the city could do to look at this situation and see if there's some equitable measures that need to be taken here. Thank you.
The, the, one thing I forgot to say when I was talking, the shelter will be fine this year. We will end the year on a positive note. The reason is I send out an end-of-the-year letter every December. I write about a cat or a dog or both. And that letter usually hits around December 1st, December 2nd of every year. We're going to, the money from that letter typically go into medical for the following year, so we tag all that money for next year. This year, I'm going to have to tag, for the first year, nine years, I'm going to have to tag some, if not the vast majority of that money for this year, so we don't end the year in a hole. So we'll be fine for this year, it's just I'm not going to have as much money going into next year for medical. So next year, I'll be in the same situation I'm in now.
And that's, to me, as a councilperson, that's a concern to me.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for, for your words, Mayor Pro Tim, and also for giving us a little bit of the context and the history. I'm wondering, and thank you as well, Doug, for being here and for the work that you do each and every day. I'm wondering, for those of us who are still, I guess in my case, a little bit newer, if you could share a little bit of context about the budget and how that set fee is arrived at, and also kind of what, what percentage or how that contributes to your overall budget. I think having a little bit more context would really help me better understand Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick's.
On a national basis, animal control contracts are based off of a per capita data. That's the residents that you serve. When I started here, the shelters were like, I'm sorry, the contracts were like you were saying, John, they are based off of the intakes that came in. And unfortunately, back then, the shelter was only receiving $14,000 a year from one entity that should have been paying close to $70,000. So the shelter was shorting itself by doing it that. But since I, you know, I worked in Phoenix and Philadelphia and Indianapolis, some bigger cities, this, the way the contracts are here is the same way they are across the country. It's just based off of the residents you serve, not necessarily the animals you take in. Because I just met with one of the Coal Town mayors, and I was telling her, here she is saying, "Well, we've only given you five animals this year, why do we have to pay you $720?" I said, "Well, I had a report of all the residents we've served from our area and what it cost us, and it was way over what they were paying us for the contract." So it's, it's, we're doing, I believe, the way that we should be doing with the per capita data, doesn't mean I won't look into something differently for next year, though.
And if I could, the, what you might, what you might consider doing, and you may even need some, some legal advice on this, Doug, but, but what you might do is, is, you know, as long as the numbers remain the same or about the same, everything's okay. But if your numbers go up a bunch, maybe you should look at asking the city to put a clause in there recognizing that if there's some unforeseen rise in numbers, whatever that is, whether it's medical cases or even numbers of intakes or whatever, that there could be something activated in the contract to help cover that, that possibility.
Well, the national per capita average is $5.85. It can go up, you know, if Colorado Springs was to come down here and take over animal shelters, you'd be paying close to $8, you know, per person, which would be an awful lot. So we are at, I think it's $4.17 for everybody combined. And the reason we're only at $4 is because we have something called the Juan Foundation. And the Juan Foundation is the gift that keeps on giving. The guy that started the animal shelter back in 1935, Ralph J. Juan, died, left the foundation, and that thing has just been gaining money. We usually receive around $18,000 from them every month. It's, it's free money, so there's no reason for me to just turn around and ask you for, hey, we should be getting $5.85 over there because we've got the Juan Foundation that's making up the shortfall over there. So it's just, it's, it's saving out the area's money, but then we have years like this year where, whoops, we're kind of in trouble.
So Doug, usually you also provide the per capita rate for Canyon City along with all the other entities, and so just so council knows that.
I have one.
Canyon City usually pays the most per capita out of all of the entities.
Canyon City is at $4.34. You're the highest out of everybody, Fremont County is second at 426, but it's a total of $4.04 for all nine municipalities. I can give this to Ryan, he can, I didn't think to bring copies of it, but you can have.
Sure, yeah, go try and compress it down, just so, I mean, we do use your services the most, but we also pay the most. Because we're willing.
Well, I, the, I think the reason you're paying, you're paying the most is, wasn't it, didn't Jimmy, Jim, I'm sorry, Jim Meisner, didn't, one year I wasn't going to ask for anything because if someone was going in, and Jim was pretty adamant, "No, no, no, you need to meet with," at the time it was Tony, "You need to meet with Tony." So that's why you guys are paying more than Connie, because prior to that, you and Connie were identical. You had the same per capita.
Right. I also remember when you came here last year, you had mentioned post-COVID that you weren't going to do any fundraisers, so I was curious if you did any fundraisers in 2022 and what your goals were.
Nothing large. The largest fundraiser we already have on the books for this year, we're going to be, we'll be doing that at, over at the Rialto like we did last year. We did small fundraisers that brought in $2,000, $3,000 apiece, but nothing large like the Rescue Runway. That thing could easily net, net a good $28,000. And that's on the books for this year. We've already, we already have it booked.
So you have it booked for this year?
Yes.
Wonderful. Any other questions for Doug? Oh, Councilmember Stein?
Do you have any insight as to why the, the emergency medical is up? Is there a specific, is there something that you see on a regular basis, problems with the animals? Is it just sicknesses, or is it like, you know, physical, getting run over or abused?
Hit by cars. Dogs are hit by the cars all the time, you know, dogs are attacked by animals. I don't know if it's wolves, I don't know what, what it is out there, but it's just, there's really no rhyme or reason to it. It's just, it's just wicked high this year, you know? And it was last year, too. It was ticking up last year, which is why I said to you guys in January of this year, I says, "I think this is going to be a bad year." Because it's, it's, the intakes for an animal shelter should be like a roller coaster where it's, it's, it goes up, you know, when the weather gets really warm, and when it starts to get cold, it goes down. It's kind of been staying up almost all year long, and it should be the same thing with emergency animals because there's not as many animals on the streets, and that's been staying steady, too. So it's been kind of weird versus the COVID year. The first year COVID, my God, you know, we didn't have anything coming in the animal shelter. It was just like, we had an empty shelter there for months. It was just, I'll be honest with you, it was nice. It was nice not seeing so many animals in there, but that, that has kind of changed.
Is there any room for negotiation with the veterinarians in the county?
Regarding?
Say, negotiate a contract with them?
We do have a contract with one vet. So that's, that's a vet that does all of our spay neutered, they get all of our emergency cases. We try to send people over there, and they give us discounts on the services they provide.
But it's a per diem? I mean, they, it's a negotiated per diem for animal?
Yes, they're, actually, the table for that is actually in the contract that, that they sign every year for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We really appreciate all that you and your team do.
Yeah, I want to thank Canyon City again. I know you said this before, but it's like, you know, every year, you know, I've been here nine years, and Canyon City's always been so, so damn nice to me. It's just like, you know, you guys have been so good and everything. And there's other areas out there that fight me every single year. They want to fight me, and I just don't get it. I mean, we were named one of the two best animal shelters in the country. Last year, we're in a top 1% of shelters in the country. This year, we're going to be in the top 1% of the country. So I appreciate Canyon City seeing what they have in their animal shelter because not everybody does, so thank you all for that. I appreciate it.
Well, I also want to recognize that the construction at Rhodes Avenue has not been easy for you at the shelter, and we appreciate your patience as well.
Ryan just gave me good news. I thought it was going on to May, and he said, "Nope, it's going to be done earlier." So yay.
Yeah, I was going to say, where are we at on that? Because this can't last forever.
He didn't say early which year, though.
Well, it's got to be before May because that water has to get turned on, so. Excellent, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Next, I'd like to invite Chief and Commander Van Dyke to come to address us about the co-responder program. And I also noticed that we have Patrick online for co-responder. Is Deborah Palmer-Thomas also for the co-responder program?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. We would appreciate hearing from each of you. Okay, excellent, we would appreciate hearing from each of you.
Specific questions or you just want us to introduce what we're looking at?
Well, please introduce it, and please keep in mind that we have some newer councils that aren't as familiar with the coresponder program. And so maybe a little bit of a deeper dive would help, too.
Okay, well, go back a little more than a year ago. Initially, when I arrived, we had a law enforcement and a civilian co-response team out there responding to calls, particularly calls involving those folks experiencing mental health crisis. They also worked a lot with the homeless and folks battling addiction and things of that nature. The premise, excuse me, the premise behind it all is to reduce the workload on law enforcement, getting dispatched to those calls that really are not a law enforcement matter, more of a health matter, a health concern. So fast forward to where we are today, out of a growing need for additional law enforcement, myself and Mr. Stevens talked about, he brought an idea, and I don't even remember what jurisdiction that was.
It was Thornton or Northland.
Yes, Northland. And so we started exploring possibilities of a civilian co-response team and absorbing that law enforcement body back into the rank and file to expand our roles, our line items, line officers. And in that process, we've collaborated with Solvista and determined a path, and this MOU kind of outlines the overall path for that civilian model that will operate not exclusively under control of Solvista, but in collaboration with the PD. They will be assigned to the PD, they will respond to calls with officers, they will maintain a caseload. But they will be supervised, clinically speaking, by Patrick, who is the co-response supervisor at Solvista. And that's the clinical aspects of it, day-to-day operations. Commander Van Dyke will be intimately involved in their response and posture in terms of case management and things like that, working in concert with Patrick. So that's where we are in a nutshell. Yeah.
Yeah, just a little bit more on the background, and Chief touched on it just a little bit. So the past, the way we ran this program, we had one officer and one co-response clinician responding. So we were only able to cover about half of the week. With this new model, we're looking at, you know, having a supervisor on the co-response team, the clinician side, as well as two.
Navigators.
Navigators, thank you, to cover the entire week. So that way, we have coverage, the PD has coverage seven days a week, and they don't have to wait for somebody to come back on shift three days later. So that's going to give us better coverage to respond to the needs of the community.
That's a very good point, thanks for bringing that up. That was Achilles' heel for us, that backend coverage.
And if I can just add, Chief, having three people on this team will help us actually follow up with individuals after the initial crisis event, so that that's the part that we seem to drop before. We want people to stop calling 911, we want people to get their needs met the first time. And having the ability to follow up will help us greatly in this new model.
Yeah, yeah, excellent point, Deb, thank you. Yeah, the wraparound services, that'll help us tremendously, having both sides of the week covered.
And Commander Van Dyke, you piloted the original program. Would you like to add anything about where we were and how this is changing, hopefully for, you know, the better?
So as Chief Schick said, the goal is to try to limit law enforcement involvement. So when he and Mr. Stevens asked me to look into this and look into comparable agencies that are using this same type of program, as Debbie just mentioned, one of the biggest things that I saw that it would make it easier for follow-ups of individuals as we, as officers, contact them out on the streets. Because one of the problems we had with just having one clinician and one officer is sometimes you have follow-ups that fall between the gaps. But now you're going to have a master's level clinician in place to be able to manage those two other clinicians, and that should lessen that gap.
And we're looking forward to increased training opportunities by having the navigators working front and backside and then having a clinician supervisor overseeing that. One of the things that, because we didn't have that backside coverage, we lacked that interaction between Solvista staff and law enforcement. And one of the goals that myself and Brian Turner and Deb talked about was helping to educate the law enforcement officers so that they, you know, we talked about CIT, we talked about emergency mental health, but understanding diagnosis. What does schizophrenia look like? What does autism look like? How do you communicate with those people effectively so that you do not escalate situations? Because our primary goal here is not to reduce what we have seen over the last 20 years is our jails become our most populated mental health hospitals. So we're trying to reduce them from even going that path.
Okay, Councilmember Stein?
Yes, I want to really commend everybody involved in this program because I have a family member who's in this area in another state, and it's really tough to work in this environment. And so I just want to clarify some things, so that when we do have, these will be partial employees of the city. And I'd like to make sure that we do what we can to make their work environment so that they stay, that they don't, we don't churn these people, because I know the kind of burnout that they face. And so I'm just wondering, and I have done ride-alongs, so I'm kind of, from the outside as a layperson, I've seen how it functions. But I'm kind of concerned about the scheduling and who's in charge. And I think that there's so much stress involved in the job itself that having two different bosses is that, I mean, how can we ameliorate that? How can we make that easier on these employees?
That's an excellent observation, Councilwoman. Well, a couple of things there in response to that concern. We are working, we have a very strong collaboration with Solvista. While they will manage the clinical aspects of that job, which by law they have to, we'll operate, we'll maintain the scheduling and day-to-day operations. And Commander Van Dyke will have a good pulse on the clinicians, the navigators. And we are, we share that same concern because we see that same level of emotional trauma with law enforcement, which is why we started a peer support, regional peer support team last year. And we have, the calls through that thing have been remarkable. Folks are using it, finding it useful. So of course, on our side of the fence, that will be available to those Solvista employees. But I know for a fact that there are resiliency programs and mechanisms in place on Patrick and Deb's side of the aisle to ensure their mental well-being as well.
Chief, thanks, and I would just add that Solvista promotes a really healthy culture of self-care, right? Like, self-care is essential in being effective in this work. There are significant benefits, time off benefits, EAP benefits. We have peer support groups within our organization. We also have developed a really good relationship with Commander Van Dyke and Chief. We meet regularly, so I don't think that staff are going to see this as two supervisors. I think they are going to see it as a united team. That's clearly our intent. And Patrick has been known to send people home when he needs to because they are feeling a little stressed out, you can't do this job if you're not emotionally stable yourself. And these are hard cases, so I don't know, Patrick, if you want to say anything else about that?
Yeah, just to reiterate, we focus on that mental health aspect. It's one thing being that counselor, but there's that other side of the humanist, the humanistic aspect as well. We understand they're human. Some of these cases are incredibly difficult. That's one of the things where I could jump in as that clinical supervisor to talk during supervision. Hey, let's debrief this. Or I would say, my door is open, I give everyone my personal cell phone. So even if they need to reach out, we're on and on, they have that option. So we really hone in on the importance of taking care of yourself because if we can't take care of ourselves, then we can't help other people. So that's a huge proponent, where we focus on the resiliency side. And then we also bring in additional things to help that resiliency as well. So that could be, like Debbie was saying, additional days off or whatever is needed. We really like to take care of our employees because they need to be able to be well to help our community.
Okay. Thank you for that, and I had two other questions. One is for you, Patrick. Are these, is the clinician and the navigators, will they have other caseload responsibilities outside of follow-up with cases from the PD?
Sorry, I unmuted myself. So with the co-response program, it's solely PD. There's nothing Solvista side, this is a hundred percent working with PD and the city. So with that, would be strictly calls from PD and PD itself. And so there won't be anything extra from Solvista. We have occasional meetings, but those are really optional. So if there is a call during one of the meetings from the crisis team, they can go to that call. They don't have to stay at a meeting or anything like that. A hundred percent, their responsibility is with PD.
Thank you, and I just had one last question for you, Chief. There's something in here that says, "The city shall provide bullet-resistant vests if deemed necessary." I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that would work. If they go out on a call, how do they know that they will or will not need one? Or somebody at your end will know?
Well, yes, ma'am, that's certainly situationally dependent. Gavin DeBecker, The Gift of Fear, author, wrote Gift of Fear, tells us to listen to our sixth sense. But the training and the supervision will guide us most likely day-to-day. They will have quick deployment vest. They have the option for concealable vest, meaning that they can wear it underneath their outer clothing, just like our patrol folks. A quick deployment vest is simply something you can put on, just like a coat, zip it up, and you have ballistic protection. So that is certainly situationally dependent. I would encourage it, I encourage that. You know, I like the error on the side of safety. If we're going to an active crisis where weapons are possibly involved, I want everybody suited up. Obviously, that probably wouldn't be their first approach of somebody, you know, suffering a crisis, sitting in the middle of the park, there's no indication of weapons, that type of thing. So it's an educated decision, but it's, it won't be one that they make alone or exclusively. It'll be dependent on the call, the nature of the call. It'll be dependent on those supervisors and officers. They get a read on the situation to help them to make that determination.
Okay, thanks a lot. Those are just the questions that I had, and I'm not second guessing anybody.
No, ma'am.
I just want, I want this, because I know how this business works, and it, people come and go, and you're going to be, you guys are going to have a lot of training invested in these people.
Yes, ma'am.
So we want people that can stay, I think.
Yes, ma'am, so do we.
All right, thanks a lot.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you. I think you're taking what was already a really good program and continuing to refine it and improve it and never being willing to settle for good enough. So taking those lessons learned and identifying those opportunities. The desired outcomes that you've written in this are, they would truly change the nature of our community, which would be fantastic, and all at no additional cost to the city or the police department. Just kudos, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. My question, I did a ride-along, I think it was in February, with the previous model, officer plus clinician. And with this change, I'm sure that officers will at times go out with the clinicians. If you could just say a little bit more about how that decision-making will occur?
The new model that we're talking about, the civilian model, they will have radios. They'll be monitoring all of the police radio traffic. So they will be responsive in nature, just as the patrol officer. So if they hear a call that sounds as though it may have a nexus to a mental health crisis, they will respond. They will have their separate vehicles, they will be able to respond in concert with the patrol officers. And by doing that, you open up that network or that communication between the line officers and the mental health specialists, where they hear certain names and they know that that's going to be a situation that they probably can assist with. We don't have to, we don't have to put the officer in a position where they have to try and negotiate with somebody they've never negotiated before, they don't understand the nature of their mental health crisis. And instead of trying to contain that and call for a crisis unit at Solvista, sometime later, they're already on scene. So they are going to be embedded in the patrol response.
And by the same token, I assume that if they encounter a situation or hear about someone who needs assistance and they know that they really want an officer with them, then that communication will be there, too.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Yes.
So just to add to that, with the reconstruction of the program, we're also going to have a new software piece in place where there will be a better line of communication with officers and clinicians. So the software that we're going to be using is Gelato. And what that's going to do is keep active notes on each individual that clinicians are working with, and that's going to be integrated into our CAD system. So when officers respond to a call, before they even get there, or when they get there, they're going to know who they're dealing with and whether or not they need to reach out to the clinician to have them at the scene. And that'll also determine, you know, whether or not they're going to stay, the officer's going to stay at the scene with that person the whole time, or if they think it's safe to, you know, allow the clinician to finish what they're doing without the officer being present.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one additional question. If I'm recalling the Northland model correctly, a key component of that was the relationship with the municipal judge and ensuring that that judge would also refer individuals when appropriate back to the co-responders for additional follow-up and kind of navigation. Is that a conversation that you've started with Judge Allen? Or is that something that wouldn't work well here? Just curious as to your thoughts on that aspect of the Northland model, thanks.
When we initially looked at the model, we had some initial discussions with the prosecutor and the judge. I don't know, Chief, have you had any recent conversations that I think?
Nothing beyond trying to avoid introducing these folks into the criminal justice realm.
But I think as the model moves forward, it will warrant more discussions with both the prosecutor and the judge.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Deborah and Patrick, if you have anything further you'd like to add to this discussion.
No, we are really excited to continue this program. And this relationship with the police department has been really effective, and I think this new model will just enhance what we're already doing.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, this program, or at least the co-responder clinician, is like that extra tool to the utility bill. This is something that officers can use to their benefit and to the benefit of our community members. So I see this program, A, creating safety for officers, B, also creating safety for our community and our community members, and then C, which I'm hoping to show in the future, will actually save the city money in the long run. So similar to what Elliot was saying, when, if an officer can step away from the scene, they could go back and service. So we're, with Gelato, we're able to track that data. So once we have everything up and running, we can start collecting that data and running the numbers. And hopefully, in the next year or two, we can come back and present those numbers to the council as a whole and show the great work that we're doing. But like, I just wanna stress, this is something that will help not only our officers keep them safe, but again, our community as a whole. So we're excited to hit the ground running and just start this program and do great things.
Thank you so much. I'm just really grateful and proud that Canyon City is a part of the forefront of this program and this methodology. Over the holidays, you know, had a conversation with my brother-in-law. He works at the Sheriff's Department in Mesa County, Arizona. I mean, that's the county for the state of Arizona. And they have a really large illegal homeless encampment right by their Sheriff's Department. And I was gonna share with him some of the tools that we use. And they had never heard of a co-responder-type program. And it was just like this mind-blowing, and it's just really proud that we have that here and that we've seen the success over the years, and that we're taking it to another level. Another component that I really appreciate, I mean, besides the variety of cases, like from, you know, working with our homeless, which is a huge issue for us as well, but when I went on my ride-along back with you, back, you know, when you were new to Canyon City, and just, you know, anywhere from going to the schools where there's, you know, a kid that has this history of meltdowns, who just tore apart a classroom to shreds, and for the Solvista clinician to be on their hands and knees and helping to de-escalate that situation and make sure they are getting the wraparound services, to, you know, a frequent flyer on the 911 calls, who they often have, you know, some mental health problems that cause problems, and they're calling the police all the time. There's all that variety. But on my personal level, I probably get almost every month, somebody reach out to me as the mayor, and they're obviously in some really serious mental health crisis. And really appreciate the relationship that Chief has with Solvista as well, so that we can hopefully get that person in connection with the help that they need. And so, I mean, that's just another little nugget in there that gives me a lot of relief to know that we have that partnership when people reach out for them. So thank you so much. We really, really appreciate all that each of you do and the partnership that we have.
That partnership's important.
All right. If we don't have any other questions, we'll let you guys get back to your comfortable seats. If there's anything else on the agenda, please speak up. Otherwise, we do need a motion to approve the consent agenda with amending by removing item D. We're gonna move that to the regular agenda, is that right, Ryan? Are we just removing it?
We're removing it altogether.
Remove it altogether.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, removing item D and the agenda as written. Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, CCPD, and thank you, Solvista. Ryan Stevens, would you like to share an administrator's report with us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have the written report in your packet. Happy to answer any questions regarding the written report. One item that's not in the written report that I had sent an email about wanting to get more direction on is the troll. The artist that did the Breckenridge Troll is interested in doing another troll in Colorado, and they've reached out to Canyon City. The cost is about 80,000 euros plus additional expenses. That's not something that we budgeted for in 2023. I received individual comments back from Council that seemed supportive, but seems like this should be probably a bigger discussion and looking for some direction there.
Ryan, where do you see if we were to move forward, where we would be able to obtain the funding for this? And this is the troll, same artist that did Breckenridge's troll.
Correct.
But he's doing a series across the nation.
Yeah, he's doing an entire series from coast to coast, and they have a path that they're following. And I don't know if they're planning on doing any additional in Colorado, but we had reached out when they were trying to relocate the Breckenridge Troll at that time, saying that we'd be interested, and they remembered that. So they've reached back out to us to see if we're interested in this new effort of theirs. I think, you know, we would have to look at the budget and see if there's something that we wanted to cut or partner with somebody like FCA to do a fundraising and, you know, see if we can come up with the additional funds.
I'm waiting for Council to chime in. I'll start with Councilmember Tracy.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's important to, and I like your suggestion about possible fundraising. Maybe there's a way to do a combination of community fundraising and city chip in some amount too. I do think the location is important. It needs to be in a troll setting, not just in the middle of downtown or something. So as we talk about it and think about it and hopefully plan for it, just let's keep that in mind. But it's a huge tourist draw in Breckenridge, and that's year-round. People walk to see the troll, which is not on Main Street in Breck.
Councilmember Worthington?
I like the idea, but I'm wondering if there's not an opportunity for a local artist to perhaps tailor it more towards something that deals more with Canyon City, and perhaps save a few dollars in that respect. So again, I like, I'm all for all the art and tourist attractions we can get, but I'm thinking there perhaps a request for bids, so to speak, going out to see if there's local artists that might come up with a different idea, that might be a little bit more cost-effective and just as effective and more, as enjoyable as the one in Breckenridge.
And that's worthy for discussion, for sure. Probably included in that discussion is also the fact that this artist has a huge following. Like, part of the reason why there's a huge draw to Breckenridge is because of this artist and what he's doing nationwide. So that's a part of that. Councilmember Stein?
I've seen the troll several times. My grandkids were obsessed with it, and they're all in college. So, and I've never been there, that there wasn't just a mass, massive crowd. And I think the idea of having bids for a local artist, they're gonna have to charge something very similar to that because of the sheer materials. Remember when we got bids from artists on murals? The same thing. There's even a local artist, they can't do it cheaply, something on that scale. And you have to kind of see the troll to get it, how big and massive he is. And I would suggest, if we could work out a deal with the area recreational people to use John Griffin Park, where all those tire swings are. It needs a really big area.
Because there's parking and...
Then there's parking.
And it's not a far hike.
Right. Downtown would be a disaster parking-wise, because it's just massive. They use the parking lot right now in Breckenridge at the ice rink. And then they walk back a trail. But the trail is always, no matter what time of the year, it's packed. You have to wait in line. So it is a huge tourist draw, for sure.
Councilmember Dennehy?
I've been to the troll as well. Been up there, it wasn't nearly as crowded. I mean, when we went there, there was one other family, but there was people there. But I really agree with Kathy. I would like, I mean, the artist does a great job, but let's change it a little bit to make it more toward our community. I'm not saying what that is, but do I want to have a troll that looks so similar to one in Breckenridge? No, I don't. You know, and that's not what Canyon City area is known for. Make it something cool, big, something to our area is what I'm, you know, I think that would be a much better idea. And I don't care if it's a giant wood dinosaur, something like that, just something different. Do it toward, do it toward our area, not to what Breckenridge has. Breckenridge has got it. Be Canyon City, let's be unique.
I don't think it's about Breckenridge, it's this artist's.
Right, no, I understand.
That's his niche.
That's his niche, I get that.
Mayor Protim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone's talking about seeing trolls. I don't think I've seen one since the 60s, but that's a, that's a different subject.
That's a whole nother level.
The, you know, I like the idea. The problem that we have is that there's a window of opportunity here for this artist. But I would add my voice to those who've spoken before me, that, to say that, you know, it's a great idea. I think that when we're dealing with public money, we really should, you know, broaden it as much as we can to get other groups involved and perhaps in fundraising. I don't think it's probably appropriate. I don't know that we really have a good place for it. The, perhaps John Griffin Park, but it seems to me that, in dealing with public money, that we need to be able to get those willing, task those that are willing to help raise funds for something like this. Would seem to me really appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, I think it's a really cool idea, but I also think it's a lot of money, and it's public money. So one of the things I'm wondering about is if it's something that we couldn't partner with the bridge on, you know, add another attraction there. They already have a large parking lot. They have resources that they could contribute towards making this happen. And then you're drawing more tourists somewhere that I think, ever since the fire, it's been a little, a little hard to up the number of attractions in a way that makes sense, and to bring back more, more things for folks to do there, an additional, an additional draw. So I think that that's another kind of maybe way of thinking about it in terms of a different avenue for funding, but still thinking about how can we get something that could potentially be a good tourist draw here. Thanks.
Councilmember Tracy?
Just, I guess, adding to what the mayor said, that part of the attraction is that this artist does have a worldwide following, and each troll is different. It's not the Breckenridge Troll. That if you look online, you can find pictures from other places in this country and around the world where he has built these works of art, and, you know, just, there's great popularity there. I think it is good, or would be good, if we haven't yet, for the city to reach out to the recreation district, to the bridge management, and maybe other potential partners to just see, not only in terms of location, but fundraising ideas. I think it's one of these things that would pay off for the area if we can find a way to do it.
Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted, first I wanted to echo John's comments, but then I love the bridge idea. I think that would be the perfect situation, and fundraising all the way.
So maybe, Ryan, it sounds like maybe we should reach out to the REC District, the Fremont Center for the Arts, the bridge, and I would like to add, the Fremont Community Foundation, too. They do a lot of fundraising efforts, and maybe they'd be interested in becoming partners. See, I don't know what the Council thinks about this, but I actually would be curious if we did a social media, just like poll. Should we get a troll, not realizing 100% that there's nothing whatsoever scientific about it? But I would be curious if it went viral. Does it show there's a lot of community excitement around it, or is it a total dud? And that, just to get that feel of the community's appetite with it, I would just be really curious about that. Because if it goes viral and there's a lot of excitement, then it kind of shows like, yeah, maybe this should be something we should pursue. If it's a dud, then like, yeah, maybe the community's not really gonna be into this. So, I don't know.
We'll do some research and reach out and bring something back for the January 3 meeting.
Okay. Anything else you need from us?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions for Ryan? No? Okay, well then we're gonna move on with our agenda. And item 9A is a new part of Canyon City's policy. Well, it's reintroduced to Canyon City. If there's someone who wants to see something go on an agenda for consideration, it comes here first to get a vote, to make sure that there's support for that consideration. And that's what item 9A is, and it's an ordinance referral to the committee for the trespass penalty ordinance. Ryan, do you want to get us started? And then maybe invite John Hammack, as I think you're kind of the one that's bringing it to us.
Absolutely. This is a trespass penalty ordinance, so it would allow the municipal court to order a person who is convicted of trespassing to not trespass in the future. And violation of such order would bring additional misdemeanor charges for future trespassing violations. So this is an effort, we've seen a lot of trespassing on private property over the last year or so. This is a way to add an escalator to those trespassing violations. And I don't know if Catherine would like to add anything to that.
No, I don't think I really have anything to add to the substance of it. I will let you know that we have spoken to the judge and the municipal prosecutor, and both are in favor of this concept, so.
Okay, Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this was, you know, based on a lot of testimony that Council heard about trespassing and trespassers. What this is intended to do is address serial trespassers or chronic trespassers, and not to single out any individual group or anything, but to address those behaviors by having kind of an escalation clause or in a way to escalate. I do have a question for our city manager, though. Ryan, does, do we, does the, as our code is right now, has there been occasion for Judge Allen to sentence someone to county jail? Do you know? There is not? Okay, this is, I did...
For the record, I'm shaking my head, no, behind Ryan.
Okay, thank you. For that amendment to the record. The, I did, I did talk to Sheriff Cooper about this when we were first, when this idea first came up, and he said that they did not have a problem accepting new prisoners. I did talk to under Sheriff Derek Irving about this, and he did remind me that if you send a prisoner to county jail, that there is a fee that goes with that, which I believe is $120 a day per person. And so it's, that would be important for us to keep in mind as we're considering this, because it's not a, it's not a, kind of the opposite of a get-out-of-jail-free card, but there could be, there could be fees and impacts to our budget. Although, we would hope that, it would certainly be our hope, my hope, that this would be something that was, did not see much enforcement action on. But, so that's what I have on it.
Well, why have it if we don't know who's person? Are you just saying that?
Well, exactly. No, no, no.
Are you just saying that, that people will, like, wise up and not trespass chronically? Or?
Well, the, you know, how big of a problem is it? The, how many people is it gonna involve? It may, there may be some budgetary impacts that we had not considered previously. That's my only point.
Okay.
Is that there could be budgetary impacts here. And if we were, you know, if we had one person that was in jail for $365, 365 days, that would be quite a lot of money. That would be a budget impact and something not anticipated.
Yeah, and again, this is for referrals, so we can get into, you know, more of those details at, you know, if this is referred to the February 8th general government meeting.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I ask one clarifying question? With regard to send, or not sentencing, but sending someone to the county jail, is that what the reference of section 116060 is, or?
Sorry, 116060 is the contempt of court provision, and that does, it's probably one of the only provisions in your code that allows jail time. It's up to five days, that's the maximum. Your general penalty provision does not, it only just permits fines and penalties, no jail time.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Catherine, just on some trespassings as well.
And, and the only reason I'm saying this is because of, uh, you know, hunting and fishing. If, if somebody's, and we do have hunting and fishing on land within city. If you're doing that, the, the, the fee and the penalty is a lot worse. Or, you know, in, in the wildlife books, it says it's $1,000 and X amount of jail time. Is that, is that the same as?
Under your municipal code?
Yeah.
No.
So?
So, if you were to be written into Muni Court, uh, for a trespass, uh, the first time, it would only be a fine. If you were written into county court under those state laws, then you'd be subject to whatever penalties exist there.
Okay, so, but could the same fine? Couldn't, couldn't be sent into both, could you? That'd be, that would be doubled.
No, it's one or the other.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So, do we need a motion for this?
According to my outline that I have been given, yes. We would need a motion to refer this to committee.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I've moved that we, uh, introduce our draft ordinance, uh, to the, um, General Government Committee for Discussion and Potential Action.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher? Aye. B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, we will discuss this more. Set February 8th, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, let it be known, February 8th. Now, we are on to Item 9B. This is concerning the municipal code Title 17 update. This is a second reading and adoption for Ordinance 21, Series of 2022. Patrick Mulready.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. You'll recall that at your December 5th, um, council meeting, Ordinance 21, Series of 2022, was introduced that made 10 proposed changes to Title 17. Um, there were, coming out of that public hearing, two requested modifications that have been made to this particular, um, ordinance. One involved, um, including, um, a, a local entity that would designate historic structures. The other was to include the word maintenance when it came to fees for parking associated with the ordinance. Uh, so those, those changes were made. They are included in your agenda packet this evening. I should also let you know that since this came to public hearing on, uh, December 5th, staff has received no communication from the public, no, no phone calls, no emails. No one has expressed any particular concerns, one way or another, about this ordinance. Uh, which brings us to the new item that's before you this evening, and that is Resolution Number 18, Series of 2022, that would set the fee for, um, in lieu of providing parking for residential uses downtown in the Main Street corridor. Uh, it would set that at $5,000 per space. Um, and included in your agenda packet this evening is some analysis that we've done, not only of some, um, local construction projects that are going on, but also of other municipalities around the state of Colorado that have adopted in lieu fees instead of, uh, a, a parking provision. So, uh, with that in mind, staff is asking that, um, you approve Ordinance 21, Series of 2022 on second reading, and that you would adopt, uh, Resolution 18, Series of 2022 this evening. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Um, Catherine, those will be two, we'll vote separately on those, is that correct?
Separate motions, yes, please.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Tracy.
I just noticed, and maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing, uh, but in the agenda and memo, it references Ordinance Number 21. But in our packet, I believe it says Ordinance Number 25. And on Attachment A, if I'm looking at the right thing.
I wondered the same thing.
Alrighty. I just now noticed that.
It is 21. Unfortunately, we had a switch before last time. We must not have caught to get the 25 out. It is 21.
21.
Is that all that you have? Councilmember Tracy? All right, Councilmember Stein.
Um, thank you, Patrick, for being so patient with us. Through all this. Um, I know that, uh, there are people in this town that even though they never show up for these hearings, but once it's a, you know, a fait accompli, they will be upset and they'll want to know. They'll have questions. And I think the first question would be, if you charge, uh, business, say, for four parking spaces, that's $20,000, something like that, um, do you have a plan, something that you're going to be put, and, and maybe Ryan has a better, can address this better. Do we have a plan of what we're going to put that money toward? Do we have a plan for a, either A, a parking lot we're going to create, some land we have to do that? Or is there going to be a parking garage? Is that part of the plan? I'm just saying, I know that our constituents, that's the questions they're going to have.
So, the first thing, let me point out a clarification. This is not a fee that will be imposed on commercial businesses downtown. This is only applicable to anyone who wants to convert above-ground floor space to dwelling units. Okay, so it would be in those instances where someone is converting, uh, you know, an above-ground floor area into three, four, five, six, however many apartment units, and they don't have physically the room to create parking on-site. They could, by paying the, uh, the fee in lieu, they could, uh, you know, absolve themselves of having to actually physically provide parking. Now, in terms of a plan for what we would do with these funds, obviously, they would go into an account, and then I believe, um, a, as a, as a municipal function, we would begin actually managing our parking resources downtown, and this would be one of the tools that we use to do that. I think Ryan can speak to, do we create long-term plans about identifying locations for future surface parking areas? And if need be, even grow those surface parking areas into parking structures long-term? That, those are, those are kind of long-range questions that I don't know we're prepared to answer fully this evening.
Um, so, if this, and I'm sorry that I misunderstood it. I read it, but I, I, I got it mixed up with the commercial. Um, so, say, somebody does develop, and some of those buildings are huge. They could do two or three apartments, and each apartment may need one or two parking spaces. So, in the interim, until we have something that we can do to expand parking downtown, are they, they will simply be in that, um, conglomeration of parking that's really in, at a, you know, in a shortage right now. So, are we, is there some kind of give and take on that? That we're gonna, we have to have something in place before we start charging for the spaces? I'm sorry if I'm being dense, but.
So, the parking requirement for multifamily residential is 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit, and that's regardless of the number of bedrooms that the particular multifamily unit may have. So, that, what that means is three parking spaces for every two dwelling units that are to be created. Based upon that, uh, what we are saying is, okay, we now have a parking requirement if you are creating new residential downtown, but we're giving you an off-ramp to that requirement where you put the city in charge of actually acquiring and building those parking areas based upon the funds that we take in, which is why the resolution setting the fee is kind of important for discussion. Do you think $5,000 is too much? Do you think $5,000 per space is not enough? That's why we provided some of the analysis that was included in your agenda packets.
I, I think, and, you know, the short, short answer is, you know, we, we can start charging the fee before we provide any additional parking. Um, you know, we hear that there's a lot of parking issues downtown. Um, and this is, this is to start managing tho- those types of resources. Um, so, planning for the future and trying to identify those lots. As Patrick mentioned, we'll probably have to do a parking study at some point. Uh, the short-term, uh, answer, and the, the one that we have on the horizon is the New Method Laundry, uh, lot. Uh, so, we, we have, uh, you know, councils purchased the, the lot behind New Method Laundry. Uh, it's currently, um, you know, set up for, to, for parking. Uh, we're still working on the New Method Laundry building for future parking as well. So, that would be the first step in, in some of these, this parking equation, but, um, certainly analyzing, uh, opportunities for parking up and down Main Street. Um, you know, as Patrick mentioned, um, you know, not everybody who is going to develop, uh, property is going to have the space for those parking spots. And, you know, with, with this, uh, in Luffy, uh, it allows them that out to, um, you know, be able to continue to develop that residential space without actually having to build that parking spot.
Are we going to charge this to the St. Cloud project?
No, the St. Cloud is a commercial enterprise as a hotel. It is not multifamily residential.
This is just a planning and zoning tool.
Thank you.
So, the Hotel St. Cloud, they're purchasing property that they're converting into parking spots, like they know they have to take care of their own parking needs. Um, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had two, uh, thoughts that were, that came to me because of the excellent analysis that you, um, provided with regard to the parking fee schedule. Um, and they involve, um, parking for those with disabilities.
Mm-hmm.
I recognize that based on the amount of units you would need to have in order to trigger the need for an ADA unit, that the likelihood is not high that, um, that that would be triggered in the downtown business district. But I am wondering if we want to ensure that we are not waiving, um, the responsibility to provide ADA parking spots close to, um, close to those entities, should that be triggered? Because I don't think that that would be appropriate to have, um, a spot that is further away, um, from that entity. So, that's my first thought on it, and my second thought on it is I understand that ADA parking spaces may cost a bit more because they require more space. And I'm wondering if we are, um, a- as we're figuring out how to calculate the $5,000 per space, if we've taken into account kind of a prorating of a certain number of ADA spots across all? Because if we're combining them all together, these 1.5s will eventually add up to, to the number of spaces in which we will need to include some ADA spots. So, I just wanted to get, I guess, council's thoughts on that, and then also, um, y'all's, uh, thoughts as to whether or not you had considered those two issues. Thank you.
So, when it comes to creating ADA parking spaces, when the city goes to build a parking lot, um, the, that will have whatever the number of spaces, the ratio is one handicapped accessible parking space per 25, uh, traditional spaces, that would be a requirement that would fall upon us as we are building that parking lot. I don't know that individual, um, residential developers downtown, as they are converting them. I don't, I don't know how we would go after if they're building two apartments and that's a total of three spaces. We give them, um, you know, $15,000 plus some sort of, um, a fee in addition to that to cover for ADA accessible spaces. I don't know how we would do that. I think the, the logic would be that the city inherits the responsibility of building the public parking, and that would include whatever quantity of handicapped accessible spaces would come along with that.
I'm not suggesting by any means an additional fee. I'm just wondering, um, how we got to the $5,000 calculation, and if it included things like ADA spaces, if it included land acquisition, if it included kind of all of the costs that go into the responsibility of providing this parking. Thanks.
So, we did not include the price of land acquisition because, you know, all the examples that we're looking at are outside of the Central Business District, and all of them have a primary use other than parking. So, trying to assign that value, uh, is a little bit tricky. Uh, Patrick, when, uh, when you did the analysis for Pharisee and the Fire Department, um, did that include, uh, all of their parking spaces? So, ADA was included in that?
It included all of their parking spaces, including ADA, so it would be baked into it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Just to piggyback off that, uh, is there going to be many ADA apartments on the second floor?
The, I, that, that goes into a building.
Right.
Per, a, a building code question, and I don't know that I'm in a position to answer that.
It would be challenging.
Right, thank you.
Well, not all ADA is like a wheelchair or walker. It could be someone who's like sight impaired, but can still access stairs. I, I guess I'm a little bit concerned if, to jump the gun too soon, if we don't have a solid plan of how we're going to execute and implement. There's already, I, I get complaints already that we've taken out parking at the Chamber of Commerce for e-charging. Um, the clock tower, that's going to take away parking. That's going to make people really upset too. The dry cleaner is like our big option to create more parking, but-
We're making progress on it.
We're making progress, but it is not happening fast.
Well, could it, couldn't the funds that are collected from this go towards the New Method Project?
Yes, it probably, yes, it could.
If we collect it.
If we collect it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could be used for, so, I just think even if we still, still want to move forward, I just, part of me wants to kind of pause, just so we can have something more in writing about what our, our strategy and action plan is. And also maybe be a little bit more aggressive with the TZAC, see if we can, are, are we still leasing spaces there? And are they all being used? Can we lease more now that they're a little bit more settled down with their business plan, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that contract's coming up as well.
See if we can negotiate some more, because that, that money can go towards leasing more spaces. Um, I just feel like we need a little bit more solid plan, although the intentions, I don't know. That's just my, my, I know. This is such a sensitive topic. Yeah.
And, and one of the things that I'm, I'm, I see too, and, you know, it's kind of, it kind of goes back to the affordable housing thing, because we put this on, that, 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 we all know that fee's going to be passed on to somewhere. It's going to be passed on. No business owner's going to, you know, or, you know, landowner, developer. They're not going to, that's not where that cost sits.
Okay.
It's going with the unit and everything.
But every other multi-unit, they are, they have to provide that parking already, already. Everybody all over town has to provide parking for their units. And so that, I mean, to make-
This is a bargain maybe in the way.
Yeah, th- th- this is to create the, the housing in the, in the Central Business District. You know, that, that, um, to, to address the housing in the Central Business District. Because right now, there is no parking, well, with, with the change of the UDC, we added the parking requirement for residential. Previously, there was not a requirement.
So, the question might be, do, I mean, do we even want to-
Yeah, well, part, part of the goal here is that we are incentivizing the development of new multifamily residential on Main Street. Um, so, yeah, we, we don't have a firm, long-range plan yet. I would recommend that if council wants to adopt this resolution and set fees, that probably our next order of business would be to maybe for, um, calendar year 2024, uh, set aside some, a, a budget so that we could engage in a, a parking study to do a demand analysis and look at potential sites.
So, you're saying if we adopted it, it would like have a, like an applicable starting in 2024, or we'd start collecting maybes?
We, we would start collecting the fees next year. We would then look at creating a, a parking demand analysis or, or a long-term parking strategy uh, for the city, beginning with a budget allocation for the 2024 calendar year.
Well, that's for council to decide. Councilmember Tracy?
So that I'm clear, and so, maybe so that we're all clear. If we didn't, if we eliminated the parking in Luffy, then what would we have in the way of requirements for new dwelling, residential units on?
We would have a requirement that anyone wanting to build multifamily residential units downtown on Main Street would be required to physically acquire ground to build the appropriate parking.
And we probably don't want that requirement, at least the way I see it. So, I'm in favor of this proposal.
So, I mean, a Plan B could be, and I'm not saying we should do this, but I'm just saying, it could be that, oh, we regret putting this in the new UDC. We should take it out. However, with parking being a major problem downtown, that's why we're not going to.
And, and bear in mind, the reason it was put in when we adopted the UDC was based upon feedback we were getting from local merchants that parking was becoming a problem because of the above-ground floor uses.
And I agree with that, but I, I'll be honest, when you go downtown, and even though we're, we're moving, people are moving their cars. moving, people are moving their cars who work downtown, they're moving them a few spaces so they don't get their ticket. And, and I know this for sure. So maybe that's something we also need to look at, because I just hear, my wife works downtown, and, and I hear it. And I hear that people are coming out of businesses, moving their cars a few spaces, and, you know, and I think that's something that we need to look at as well.
And these are all strategies for how a local government manages its parking resources in a downtown context.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so that I, bless you, just so that I understand, would the folks who are paying the parking in lieu of fee for the residences, would those residents be required to park in the designated parking in lieu of fee place? Or could they still? I'm trying to think of a...
It's fungible. I think it's fungible.
So, or would we still continue to say, have the same issues and challenges that we currently have?
I don't know if that's a legal question. I, I don't foresee that they're going to park, that we could force them to park in any particular space, but, you know, the, the idea is to create more parking inventory over the long term.
So we need to have more parking spaces for people to park overnight downtown?
And, and parking at that point, I think the word that was used was fungible. Parking would be essentially a fungible commodity.
The answer to your question is no. That's, that's not really how the, the fee in lieu concept works. So let me give you an example that doesn't involve parking. So you have a subdivision, and you have open space requirements when someone builds a subdivision, and they don't want, they don't want to build that park, and they want to pay a fee in lieu instead. So the town or the city, the municipality, can take that money, purchase property, and maybe develop a park somewhere else. So that's to kind of spread the public benefit of that money. But it's not, those people don't have to go to that park and enjoy it. So that's, that's how it typically works with fees in lieu. So same thing with parking. The city could obtain land, build parking, and, you know, maybe portions of it, I'm just throwing ideas out, could be designated for those residents, that they could park there overnight. Like the city, the city would enter into some type of arrangement or something like that, so.
But, but generally speaking, the fee in lieu that is collected would be for downtown parking. It's not going to be somewhere outside of the downtown.
This would only be applicable within the CB central business district.
Sorry, the park will be very close.
But the parking in fee of area, parking in, no, in lieu of fee area, wouldn't necessarily have to be in the CB zone.
Yes, it would. That, that would be what we are doing. It would, it would establish this fee is only applicable to above-ground-floor residences along Main Street in the central business district.
Yes, I understand that part. I mean, the parking lot that would be constructed with those fees, would that have to be in the central business?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions or discussion, we could take a, well, we need, first, let's do BI, and that's the second reading of ordinance twenty-one, series of twenty-two. And this is concerning the Title Seventeen Municipal Code Concerning Permitted Uses Parking and Definitions and Adding an Administrative Interpretation Process. So we'll need a motion and a second for that. All right, Councilmember Tracy?
I move that we approve on second reading and adopt by title only ordinance twenty-one, series of twenty-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll do part two, and that's introduction and adoption by title only of the Resolution Eighteen, and that's for Canyon City to set a fee for parking in lieu. Brandon Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution Eighteen, series of twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Patrick. Thank you. See you next year.
Yes. Item C, second reading and adoption by title only for ordinance twenty-five, series of twenty-two, and this is concerning liquor licensing and festival permits.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a second reading, and stat, we have not received any additional public comment, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Absolutely.
That we approve ordinance twenty-five, series of twenty-two, on second reading.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council and staff. Item D, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance twenty-six, series of twenty-two, and this is an addendum to the Master Lease Agreement with U.S. Bancorp, Government Leasing and Financing.
This is an addendum to our lease agreement for U.S. Bancorp. This ordinance is for streets equipment. This is a second reading. We've not received any additional public comment, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance twenty-six, series of twenty-two, on second reading.
Aye. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Item E, this is also a second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance twenty-seven, series of twenty-two, and this is, this is an addendum to the Master Lease Agreement with U.S. Bancorp, Government Leasing and Financing, yet again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This addendum is for the financing for police vehicles. We have not received any additional public comment, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt on second reading by title only ordinance twenty-seven, series of twenty-two.